Young, welcome, Charles.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, you you met everyone here? Yeah?
You and yourself?
Yeah. Only one you can't trust is me. All right, it's 1:30, I believe. We're gonna start today's, uh, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna s- call to order the today's zoning board of adjustments. And, uh, it is May 5th, happy Cinco de Mayo. And it is 1:30. And we'll get started. We have a quorum, it looks like. Seven. Wow, right. Seven, seven members. And, uh, let's see, I've already called it to order, and we go to item number two, public comment. Oh, you want me to read that? Should I read it? Oh, come on. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak, should speak from the podium, address comments to the DISS, begin by stating their name and address or single member di- district, comma, and limit all remarks to less than three minutes, period.
We didn't know one for this section.
All right, didn't think so. All right, item number three. Review and take a related, uh, action related to minute records of the regular meeting held Monday, April 7th, 2025. Have I looked over minutes, any questions?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Uh, okay, item number four, ZBA 25-05 SAISD fencing. A request for approval of a zoning variance to allow fencing taller than four feet along property lines at six SAISD locations, 323 Penrose Street, Glenmore Elementary, 2302 Bradford, Bradford Elementary, 120 East 39th Street, Goliad Elementary, 2104 Johnson Avenue, Crockett Elementary, 201 Mills Paul Street, McGill Elementary, and 655 Caddo and adjacent properties, Central High School.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner.
Hello, Austin.
As you mentioned, uh, this is a request for six total properties, uh, Glenmore, Bradford, Goliad, Crockett, and McGill Elementary Schools, and Central High School as well. Um, there's a variety of zoning districts across these properties, including RS1, RM2, and CGCH. And what we have is a request to allow fencing taller than four feet, uh, uh, along property lines, whereas normally the maximum height allowed is four feet. So we did send out 240 notices on this, which is quite a few. We received four or five in favor, um, none opposed. People generally seem to think that it was a good idea. Under our staff analysis, so this fencing's coming as a real, a result of some state requirements from a couple of years back on school security. Um, however, this fencing does require variance in some spots under our zoning ordinance. Uh, we think that there are special circumstances and that schools are unique properties affected in unique ways, and that literal interpretation would be contrary to direction given at the state level. Ultimately, we think granting of a variance is in the public interest as it promotes public health and safety, and all the necessary criteria for granting of variance have been met. So here we have a look at some of their site or concept plans. Um, there may be some fencing there already today, but I think some of it's being improved or replaced. And there's Bradford Elementary and Goliad Elementary. Here we have Glenmore and Central. Uh, I think there may also be some, some fencing in this area as well that's not shown yet. Um, it's worth mentioning that they will still be required to maintain the 30-foot site triangle on, for visual clearance on corners or intersections like that there. With that, we are recommending approval of the variance for the six properties. Um, staff are working on an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would make an exception for schools, so that way they don't have to come back to this board in the future. Um, but for now, we have to move forward with the variance. Do you guys have any questions?
So are these fences gonna be similar to the one, uh, at McGill right now, the new fence?
Um, I'm not aware of that one. I think they're gonna be anywhere from eight to 12 feet in height.
Those are at least eight or 10?
Yes.
They're a black chain link fence?
I guess, San Rita.
Okay.
Just more of the height.
Is that what they are, around Central also?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I think we do have a representative if you want to answer that question, but.
Okay.
So currently, like at Goliad, the, the limit is four feet, yes?
Four feet within the required front yard setback of 25 feet, so yes.
Okay, so my question is, what's the front yard of a school? Um, there were a couple, like McGill wasn't listed in, in the information that I'd gotten, like the, the overview got shot. That wasn't listed. Um, and there was one other one, I wanna say Crockett, but I didn't see the Crockett one in here either. But, my question, I, I went by Goliad. The theory is they're four foot, right? I'm not four feet tall. Their fences are taller than I am, or as tall as I am.
No, the theory is that the variance actually right now accepts like that it can be four feet, so they're asking for a variance for it to be higher than four feet.
Right, I'm saying they're already higher than four feet.
Right, some of them are six feet, some of them are eight feet, so they need to go up to 10 to even higher. So we have to accept that, or present the variance.
So, did the school district ask for just these?
Yes, so, we were in conversations with them. We asked them to choose, um, the ones that they would like to move forward with on permits as soon as possible. Yes, why, because we are working on that bigger change of the ordinance to make an exception specifically for, um, both public and private schools for fencing. Um, so this is pretty much their, their first six that they wanna move forward with permits on. And I'm not sure about the existing fencing that's here today. I can't speak too much as to how that came about, um, or when it came about.
Austin, don't we have a few more, like, in bunches that are gonna be coming? We're doing these in, in sections, right?
Hopefully, this is the only hearing that will be for these fences. Uh, I'm thinking we'll get the, the change passed through within the next couple of months before we require a second round of these.
Okay.
How tall will it be?
How tall will they be? Um, I think anywhere from eight to 12 feet.
Not gonna put a maximum height on there, though? Um. Just kinda hoping ended in it, fill up 20 if they want to.
Well, it's in the SAISD proposed bond already, so it's just basically clearing the variance for the city part of it. But I think the bond that just passed was actually 10 to 12 feet, depending on the school.
The state, the state law is 10 feet, correct?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
Okay, that would've been good to know.
Um, if, if it makes you more comfortable, I think you do have the ability to place a limit on the, the height.
Just asking.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Anyone here from the school district, or? You're not from here.
What's that?
You must be from Austin.
My name's Jason Henry.
I almost matched it.
That's right, I remember you from the last time. Two good-looking guys with long hair. Uh, my name's Jason Henry, I'm the purchasing director, uh, with SAISD. I'm gonna be overseeing these, uh, projects for fencing. The, our intention is to raise all the fences to eight feet.
Eighteen feet?
Eight.
Oh.
Eight.
That's really tall.
But they'll let you go taller, it sounds like, so.
Right, yeah. Good deal, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Scratch paper. All right, any discussion by the board?
We do have one more for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we have what?
One more public comment.
On this, okay. Uh, let me open it up for public comment.
So we have a David T. Blake.
Come on up there.
If you, if you'll, if you'll come to the podium and state your name, please.
My name's David Blake, and I live right across the street from Bradford School. And, uh, I live right where the buildings end and the playground starts. And then that encompasses about maybe two more houses down, and that's the area where the kids play. And the rest of it's a huge field. Right there in front of my house, I've, I've had people cut through my yard, go across the street and into the school when it wasn't open, and hop the fence and go on through the buildings, and I'm assuming go out the other side. And, I mean, I've, I've, I stopped the guy and told him I didn't want him, I didn't ever wanted to see him come through my yard again. And, and I haven't. I worry about more somebody driving by and shooting at the kids. I'm ex-military, and those sort of things have always been in my mind. And, uh, I was wondering if they're gonna put some kind of slating in those fences so you can't see through them. If you can't see them, you, you can still shoot through the fence, but you're not gonna be able to aim. And, uh, I, I sit there and watch the kids play, and I shag the balls when they kick, when they kick them over the fence, 'cause it's really too low. And, uh, I kinda worry about that. And, uh, it's especially, it came on my mind as like, okay, if this happens here, what am I gonna do? And it's like, I, I looked, and it's like, really isn't virtually nothing I can do. Even if I was armed, you couldn't do anything because of the way it's, the way it's set up in there. Those kids need to be farther away from somewhere else, 'cause it's right next to the street.
Dangerous world we live in, ain't it?
Say what?
A dangerous world we live in.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm 72 years old, and I never seemed to like the things that are going on in this world right now.
Yeah, crazy.
Dave.
No, no.
Well, David, I appreciate, thank you for your service and your comments. Uh, unfortunately, this board doesn't rule on the style, and, uh, we don't take stylistic license in designing the fence, so.
No, but, uh, you do have input with the people that do, somebody does.
But you do as well, I would encourage a SAISD meeting.
And, and it's like, well, it's like, you can talk to them and see what they gotta say. They might say that that needs to be done. But if they don't, you might oughta bring it up.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? There being none, closed public comment? You at school wanna talk?
Did you wanna respond?
Thank you.
You're back up. At this time, we just plan on doing eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with no slats in it.
With slats in them?
Without.
Without?
Thank you.
Eight. Making my notes. Forgot my other piece of paper.
Okay, public comment's closed, we have the comment back. I'm gonna talk to the board, board have any questions? Or ask for board commentary? There being none?
I will make a motion to approve the city's.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve in a second. We'll go to the vote unless there's more discussion needed.
No, sir.
There being none, go for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item number five, ZBA 25-06, 3642 Old Post Circle. A request for approval of a zoning variance from the zoning ordinance, section 501.8, for 10-foot, 10-foot front setback in lieu of the required 25 feet. Sounds like a carport. Go ahead, hello.
It is. Uh, hi, Ray Lineberry Planner, um, standing in for Kim. She is out today, um, and her case is at 3642 Old Post Circle. Um, it is in the Sunset neighborhood, the District 6 Larry Miller, um, and it is RS1 zoning. And the vision plan is neighborhood. It is .181 acres, and it is a request for a 10-foot setback in lieu of the required 25-foot setback in the front of the house for a carport. We did mail out 34 notices, we received four in favor. Zero opposed. So kind of give you a timeline. In 1999, the previous owner applied for a variance to allow a carport, and it was denied. In 2003, that is what staff has found out, um, is, looks like is when the structure was built. And then, um, 2021 is when the current owner purchased the house. And then, um, we received notice of a complaint about a carport being there. And so they were sent a notice of violation. So during the analysis, um, staff looked, and staff could not identify any special circumstances. Um, the lot is a standard shape, it's actually a little bit bigger. It is not located or near the open structure overlay zone. Um, there really aren't any other carports in the surrounding area. So, um, granting the variance would be inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, as it would confer a special privilege to this homeowner. And these are pictures of the carport. It is, it is actually further back from the street, however, from the property line, it is 10-foot back. So they would be within the 25-foot building area. So with that, staff is recommending denial. Um, and with that, is there any questions?
When was the variance, uh, turned down in 99?
Yes, 1999.
So it's been up since 99? Why wasn't it?
It's been up since 2003.
2003, okay. Why wasn't any enforcement done before then?
Um, as the city is complaint-based for violations.
From a, more than two previous owners before, and 20 years later, someone complains, and that's what we're looking at.
And, and they, we found out that they didn't even have a building permit for it, so.
The original people who put it up, not the current owners.
There was, there was no building permit at all for it.
The person that complained?
Are they complaining because they couldn't get a permit for a carport? What, what, what started all this?
I don't, I don't know. That is a very good question, and I'm not sure on that one.
I just don't see how something that's been up to that long, and now y'all wanna enforce the law on it, when it's been up so many years.
Well, and I was looking at section 513, carports and required yards. Existing carports can be exempted if they're grandfathered in, if it was completed before March 8th of 95. If it does not encroach on the public right of way.
Correct.
Setback a minimum of five feet from the curb. Structurally sound, substantially open. Clear of junk, household trash, yard trash debris, as an accessory to the principal building. So there's seven criteria.
Correct.
That would allow it to be grandfathered.
But it doesn't mean that 1995.
This matches six of the seven, correct?
Correct.
The only thing is, the person who put it up didn't violate the law early enough to grandfather it in. Is that correct?
How, I will question you on one of those. We are not sure if it's structurally sound because they didn't get a building permit. So building has not been out there to inspect it.
Okay.
Looks like a prefab, going to me from a.
Yeah. I mean, I drove by and looked at it, it didn't seem right. And one of the comments in the packet I got was, there are no other carports in that neighborhood. One of the notifications you guys mailed out went to a house with a carport in any front yard. 'Cause I drove right by it.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not sure what got missed or how that got missed. And I'll admit, I didn't drive through the entire neighborhood, I went by and looked at this one. I missed a turn and wound up on the street that ran parallel, and that's why I was like, that doesn't look like the picture in my packet. And I turned around and went around, and, and then city water was digging in the street, and so like, anyway, it was, I felt like I needed a piece of cheese.
Yeah.
When I got done, I was the rat in the maze. But there was another carport that literally got one of the notifications for this. So that was my, that was my question is, how did this get drawn to y'all's attention? Somebody filed a complaint?
Yes.
And I'm new, so I'm illustrating my ignorance here, I apologize ahead of time.
You're doing a good job.
I'm learning as I go.
You're doing a fine job, go ahead.
So, um, one of two, I, I'm not sure I, that I can answer it how it happened, but there are one of two ways.
Okay.
Um, one is somebody calls code compliance and says, hey, um, I don't think this is right, and code goes and checks on it.
Right.
The other way is correct, somebody came in for a permit, we told them they couldn't have it, so then they told on all their neighbors that had one.
On somebody, okay.
Um, I'm not sure which one this falls under, this was not my case, and it was not in the report.
Well, I, I was just, I was just curious as to how it, 'cause I was like, I looked at the, at the coding and looked at this and went, well, other than the date, you know, if he'd have just ignored the law sooner, no way you'd be having any problems. But that, that was my question, is like, I didn't know if somebody noticed it and code compliance just drove around, we're out looking for problems, or if it was a complaint filed by someone.
It was a complaint filed by somebody.
Sorry.
No problem, just fine.
You're good.
Fine. Excellent, excellent. Any more questions? For Ray?
No. Great.
Thank you, Ray. All right. We need public comment on this, so step on up and state your name for the record. Welcome.
Welcome, I'm Ed Seward.
Go ahead.
Welcome, everybody, listen, uh, I was asked by the Custonawalas, they're the property owners, to stand in for them. They had a family emergency yesterday. Uh, they have a family member in ICU in Lubbock, they left this morning. That's, uh, that's why I'm stepping up, all right? My wife and I live at 3645 Old Post Circle since 1998, all right? Our memory is that this has been up from the original owner, was installed erected in 99. I'll just put that out there. I will read verbatim a statement from the Custonawalas. Mary, it's Samuel and Mary, it's the 3642 Old Post Circle. Due to conflict of plans, we were unable to be here, but personally ask that you please consider allowing us to keep our carport. Appraisal office shows this structure to have been built in 2003. We purchased this property four years ago. It never occurred to us that the carport had been put up illegally. We did ask several neighbors why they were the only one, why we were the only property with a carport, and all answered the previous owner had been permitted to build years prior. It seems unlikely that this carport had not been tagged in all of those years. Several of our neighbors have stated that they wish they had a carport as well, due to the size of newer vehicles, and that they would not fit their garage. We do not have a garage, that is, is, it is enclosed by the previous owner. Removing the carport would leave our vehicles with no protection. We have spoken to several in the neighborhood, and none oppose us having the carport. It does not obstruct view. One neighbor stated, he has lived since 99, and remembers that this carport was already up. Being senior citizens, it's difficult for us to finance unexpected expense to hire someone to remove the structure. I understand that as a zoning and planning board, you are considering making rules and regulations in allowance of property owners for carports. If this is the case, please allow us to keep this carport, and instead only to have it removed, and then having one put up, and in if we may or may not be able to afford it. Thank you, Samuel and Mary Custonawala.
Very good. Are you a, are you a neighbor?
I am, we live directly across the street.
Yeah, you'd think there'd be a statute of limitations on some of this, wouldn't you?
That is the biggest question of note, uh, with my wife and I. And we knew the previous owner. They live there, I mean, we've li, they live there as long as we've been occupants, and well before that. My, my, both my kids grew up with their grandchildren, so, there you go.
So it's messy?
Probably with, uh.
I'm sorry.
Uh, there's, you can count on one, on four fingers, the number of people on our block that have been there as long as we have. The neighborhood is pretty rapid turnover, so, uh, these are good folks. All I will say about this is, um, it, you know, there's the obvious question of why, it, it, as I say, we've been there since 98. I think that structure's been there within a year of the time we moved in. So my question is gonna be, how is it that this was allowed to freestand this long without somebody saying something? You can jump to this gentleman's commentary, you can go to Old Post Court, and there is another freestanding carport. It is a, this is semi-permanent, it is countersunk and anchored to the extended drive. And they, I remember when they poured the concrete on it. So I'm not sure what to, what you consider permanent, but it is anchored down, uh, and it is solid in concrete, so.
And it's withstood the test of time? Withstood the test of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, folks, appreciate you.
Thank you. State your name, please, for the record.
Glenn and Twyla Huffman. We lived at, we live at Old Post, uh, Circle 3637. We've lived there since 94, 30 years. And I have a petition that me and Mary took around. Every neighbor we could find happily signed it happily. We don't understand why this has happened. Um, they should've been done something a long time ago. It's not fair, it's not right. If we're not complaining, and the people that called in were only wanting, put one up not to complain about it. I talked to that young man, he did that three months ago. He wasn't calling to complain about it, he wanted one. And so he called in, they said, no, we're sorry. 10 years ago, we put one up. Mr. Scott had one, why can't we have one? We put one up, got tagged right like that. I called in, I said, why does he have one? And they told me, and they've told four or five other neighbors that he was grandfathered in, and that he could have his, is exactly what they told us, grandfathered. Well, we went to the permit meeting, they said, oh no, we don't do grandfather, but that's what they told four or five of us, that it was grandfathered in. So to make them take it down is just a trusty, it's just not right to, to do that to them. They, they would've never bought the house had they known that he was gonna have to take that down. And so, anyway, I'd, I'd like for y'all to see this, because we, 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 we happily signed it.
Yes, thank you.
I really wished you would please, please, if there's any way.
Everybody should have neighbors like y'all.
There's any way. It was about 10 years ago.
It was in 214?
Yeah.
Is it everybody?
We put it up.
Oh, we took, I mean, we took it down.
Yeah, we took it down, in fact, the lady at the permit department said, I'm gonna tell you something, that contractor knew better. He didn't come get a permit, and he put it up, and if he doesn't give you your money back, you let me know, and we'll handle it from there. So I called him back, and I told him what the lady said. He said, okay, yeah, we'll do that. I said, I'm gonna tell you something, are you listening to me? I said, nobody's taking my carport down until I have my money back in my hand. I said, you should've known better. He said, okay, yes ma'am, I will. So I got my money back. But, you know, that's 10 years ago, why didn't at that point in time, when they say?
Well, the city knew that that was going on, and they didn't do anything to that carport at all. In fact, they said it was legitimate.
And, and the one on Old Post, uh, where's, where the circle and court, they've got a big nice carport up. I don't, I don't know what that's about.
I think that was the one I saw.
That's the one he saw. So if you're gonna do one thing, you know, I mean, it is not fair.
But it's built on the side of the house.
Right, it's on the side of the carport, not, or side of the driveway, not on top of it.
That wouldn't bother me at all.
No. None of it bothers us, but, you know, we're just saying, I just wish y'all would please consider, don't.
Yeah, that's a long time.
It's $500 a day fine for them, every day it stays up, after they determine they can't have it. And they're an old retired couple, you know, like the rest of us.
And you, you had said something earlier about the reasoning why the car, why the garage was enclosed?
Okay, the, uh, reason that, uh, Mr. Scott and them, uh, did that was because they had an invalid mother, and they took the car, the garage in and made a whole room for her, a hospital bed and everything. So then they, they wanted that put up, so they put that up. So I don't, I don't, I don't get this where he didn't have per, I understood it wasn't even a thing back then, when he did it. He didn't even have to have a permit, so what I, you know, I understood, but in 1990, we were there in 94, and he did that in 99, I don't, I don't even think they had to have a permit back then. But anyway, just please consider what, what would be fair, and that none of us are complaining. If we were all complaining, yeah, I could see that, but none of us are. That petition, that, we don't, we don't wanna take it, taking it down. So, anyway, just, just please consider that, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are y'all, wait, are y'all, any questions? Bring them back up.
Our, our packet showed that it was built in 2003, and they were all saying it was built in 99. Do you know where the 2003 came from?
I think it's on the tax office that way. So sometimes the tax rolls won't catch something at a certain time, and a addition or anything like that, and a lot of it you'll notice, the tax rolls will have a certain.
I think it was the denied building permit, or?
No.
So, like, what we have, um, the timeline we have is, in 99, they came in front of ZBA. ZBA denied them, and then sometime between 99 and 2003, when the tax appraisal office did their appraisal and found it, um.
So they applied for a permit, got denied, came here, got denied, built it anyway?
Correct.
That's the argument.
But it easily could've been built in 99, and the tax office does not consider it something that, that's permanent.
Okay.
So they could've looked at it like it's a tent or anything like that, because the, if the concrete was already there, dry. the, if the concrete was already there, a driveway, then it just could be covering it. So until they actually caught up, then they would have updated their records. So that's probably where the discrepancy could be on when it was actually built and when they finally got taxed on it.
Thank you.
I thought at, at one time there was a, I don't know if it was a clause or what it was, if it, if it wasn't permanent, that it's like that one's bolted down, that it can be moved, that they were accepted that way. I don't know. I, I don't know. I had heard something.
Probably from a tax and, tax appraisal office. I'm not sure on, probably not on encroachment over the twenty-five foot building line. But I'm not sure on that a hundred percent.
And, and when you're saying it needs to go from their property line, what, ten foot back, twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five foot back? Their, their property line starts where? At the curb?
Mm-mm.
At, or the slope?
The sidewalk would be.
Hmm, probably. That one looks like it might be ten foot behind the curb to me where the.
So like maybe behind the mailbox?
So they're needing ten more feet. So they're probably, they're within the fifteen feet. So they need ten more feet. That's why they're asking for a ten foot setback.
So if they chopped ten foot off that carport, it'd be okay, right?
Well, maybe.
It won't stand.
It won't stay because there's no balance. I mean.
Did y'all go measure that?
Um, we had, we had a building inspector go out there and measure.
Cause I'm like, where, if, if they removed a portion of that, where would they be in compliance? One section off, two sections off, everything, everything but.
They wouldn't be in compliance because it's freestanding. They would never be in compliance because it's freestanding. And that's what.
They could build it if they were twenty-five feet from the property line.
If they're twenty-five feet from the property line, you can build a carport.
You could build it. So where's twenty-five feet from the property line? Way back almost at the house, basically.
Where the house is.
Pretty much where the house is.
They don't have a garage.
Might be a few feet in front of the house.
So there's basically no way that that could be in compliance and be twenty-five feet.
Yep.
Unless we approve it as a board.
Unless we were to approve it, then yes, it's, but even if they were to take that down and try to tie into that roof line, you could, you still would have to get a variance to come off that many feet.
Right.
To make it a usable carport.
Well, in a moment of levity, I have great neighbors, but I don't know of many that'll come and defend me like these folks did.
I think.
That's true.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I will voice that I generally, I, I understand code compliance. I understand rules and regulations and things like that. At the same time, and I'm sure y'all already know how I feel, is I, this has been, this structure has been there quite some time. And for it to have been sitting there this long and there be no issues and there's no complaints. I know Brandon's probably gonna argue with me and, but.
No, he's been quiet so far.
I know. I'm surprised. I'm surprised. I, I, if, if everyone's done with comments, I would like to make a motion to.
Approve.
Yeah, I was supposed to, I was, make sure I make the verbiage correctly. Approve the ten foot variance.
Second. So I did want to clarify before the board votes that you guys are approving the setbacks. You are not approving that it's allowed. It still would have to get a building permit and meet building code.
So.
Hold on, let me reword that thing.
Based on what I read, the only issue would be whether it's structurally sound, right?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said, based on what I pulled off. Existing carports, the exempt, it, it would be exempted i- if it does not encroach on the public right of way. We're good there. Um, it has a setback minimum of five feet from the property line, which it clearly does. Structurally sound, that's open to inspection, correct, right? The building inspector had to go look at it. It's open, clearly it's open. It's clear junk. I have more stuff in my driveway than, than they do. And that's just what fell out of the back of the truck. And it's an accessory to a principal building. So everything matches except for whether or not it's structurally sound. And they would have to go, they'd get a building permit, they'd get inspected and they'd say, yes, it's not going to collapse and kill anybody. And they'd be good to go if we granted the variance.
If, if this motion passes, it is on the floor right now, yes. However, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that it does still have to go through the building permit process.
So do I need to rem?
Which consists of what?
So I'm, I'm gonna remove my motion so that I can.
Amend your motion.
Yes, I'm going to amend it. That's why I said, that's why I said, I'm removing it before anyone's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I already made up my mind what I was gonna do. Hold on a second.
I want to make sure I get the verb, we get the verbiage right.
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to let you say the motion again. You want to amend it?
She's gonna amend it.
Okay. First and foremost, for the audience here, staff and the people here, they're doing their job. They are reading the letter of the law. They, they don't have much, a lot of wiggle room on these kind of things to, you know, keep y'all from, or folks from having to come in front of us and talk like this. And a lot of them weren't even born when this thing was. So just remind yourself of that. These folks right here, they're good people and they're doing their job. And, uh, it's up to us. Four old dinosaurs plus two, three younger ones, you know, to work through this. And, uh, but anyway, I just want to say that. And Brandon, if, I mean, I'm, I'm serious about the statute of limitations on some of this stuff. If, if someone would send a note to the fourth floor, that needs to be considered. I mean, this is wide open forever. I mean, the only other thing that doesn't have a statute of limitations on it's murder.
Well, it, this shows. At that location, prior to March eighth, nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the statute of limitations is now thirty years.
I know, yeah, but it's not on the books and they're just following the rule. It just needs to go up to the fourth floor and of course.
Can I illustrate my ignorance again? What is the downside of approving this? Do we set a precedent and then everybody with a carport in the city council shows up? And we've got a line out the door and down the block?
So I think the downside is if you can't meet the variance criteria in the code, the six requirements that, um, staff put up, then you're granting a variance that isn't allowed by the code. So if you can justify each and every one of those requirements, I have no problem with it. As far as the statute of limitations, for code enforcement, each and every day is a separate violation. So yesterday would have been a violation that, um, they didn't meet those setback requirements. So like you said, the, the code back to ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-five said, if you're in violation before then, yeah. Um, but they haven't proved that up.
Built it March seventh, nineteen ninety-five, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? I mean, I'm just, like I said, I'm, I'm new at this, so I'm learning.
I mean, that's a city council prerogative, uh, as far as the ordinance that they adopted. I mean.
And also statute of limitations would be city council.
So I have a question for the city staff. It, it mentions, you know, one of the six criteria, special circumstance exists, et cetera, et cetera. How did you all, obviously I can read it, but how did you all come down on building out the mother-in-law hospital room, if you will? Is that in your estimation, a special circumstance? Because then point two is the special circumstances are not the result or actions of the applicant. Ergo, it was already done before they got here. So where do you all, where do you all come down on specifically point one?
So.
Since you're not the one that did all this.
Yeah, yeah. It's not your homework. You're just copying here, so.
So point one is the special circumstance. Like I said, the, the lot size is the size of everybody else's. Um, there is no, the, the house wasn't built closer than usual than all the other houses. There is no hill that, you know, everything is on. There, there is nothing that makes this lot stand out differently than all the other lots right around that area. Because we were thinking if we did grant this, then that means all those other lots can come forward and ask for the exact same thing. And again, there is no special circumstances that stands out. They're not in the open structure overlay. They're not even near the open structure overlay. It starts behind the old H U B. Where the Whataburger is and everything. So it, it goes north from there. So they're not even near it.
Oh, they're by McHale in the park.
Correct.
Towards the Louvre.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
So what you're saying is lot size and spacing, not material, uh, construction on the lot?
Correct.
Okay.
So I do have a motion on the floor that I'd like to amend. No, I just want to make sure we're with, still within that, that was, within that time limit.
While we're talking about, through discussion.
So that's why I didn't know if I needed to amend. Okay. So I'd like to make the motion that I'm, and amend to approve the variance and accept the carport as is.
Then you add to the motion? Give us some cover down the road about how, the reasons it's been locked up so long?
No, I think we've met six of those seven criteria. And that's what I'm saying, as is.
Do we get to create a?
Yeah, for future people that come in, why do they let, will we let this happen?
Well, I think we've stated that we've, they've met six of those seven.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's my question is, because there's basically no statute of limitations on this. It's just from, so tomorrow, the statute of limitations is going to be even further. And six months from now, it's going to be even further in the road. So at some point, the statute of limitation is going to be, if your carport's been up a hundred years, then you can leave it where it is, right? I mean, that's, because it's on that date, not subject to how long has the carport been up? Has it been up since that date? So there's basically no statute of limitations.
Right, but with this motion, with this motion.
On this motion, we could go.
No, we can't.
No. We're either accepting or denying the variance. That's the only.
Okay. I'll repeat.
Sorry.
I'm making a motion to approve the variance and accept the carport as is.
There's the motion, the second.
Second.
And call for the vote and list of more discussion. Being done, I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven zero. I'm gonna move on to Old Post. Y'all are nice. I mean, yeah, you know? Yeah. Hopefully everything goes well. Okay. Division, uh, item number six, division report.
Uh, speaking as the highest planner here, I'm gonna go with there is none. Um, we do have somebody starting in June, so you may see a new face, um, come June. So I will say that at least.
Good, 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 good. Thank you. Uh, item number seven, uh, Rick, you showed up. You want to say anything about any, okay. Item number seven, next meeting agenda, the next regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at one thirty P M. on Monday, June second, twenty twenty-five in the East City Hall, in the, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room, period. Item number eight, adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
There's a motion second? Do we need to discuss it? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.